Let's call this meeting of the Board, Genesee County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, please. Or I'm sorry, call to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger, Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Schumaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuznow.
Here.
Commissioner Wago.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Welling.
Present.
All right. Tonight, Brian Floane was nice enough to actually give an occasion. So Brian, if you would, lead us in that.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today, colleagues and residents. We pray that you provide us with open hearts and open minds as we conduct the business of Genesee County. Amen.
Amen. Now if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. All right. I need approval of the meeting minutes for June 18th. I have a motion and support any discussion. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion passes. This time, we set aside for public address to the board. If there is anyone who would like to speak to the board, please come up, give us your name and where you live.
Hello. My name is Dr. Asia Harris. I am a Flint resident and family medicine doctor here in Flint. I'm speaking to show the value and need of the Healthy Start Program. As a primary care doctor, I see the impact preventative actions and resources can have on the health of my patients, my neighbors, and my community. Healthy Start is essential for addressing infant mortality rates, prenatal and postpartum complication risk. We combat health disparities by addressing social determinants of health and indirect things that influence health outcomes. Funding for programs that proactively provide resources and provide access help create healthier todays and tomorrows. We need, we need programs like Healthy Start to ensure a better and stronger future for children and to promote healthy development for children and their families. The threat to the funding is not only something that is broader than the Healthy Start Program. With the funding threats and cuts that are happening, there's going to be a ripple effect of the health of every individual in our county, but also the future people and generations to come. People don't think about their health access as being beyond the patient-doctor clinic experience, but programs like Healthy Start are ways that we prevent people having to come to their doctor for critical problems, people having to come to the emergency room for critical concerns. And I see the devastating impact of things that people have not done 10, 20 years ago. And Healthy Start was created so that way we wouldn't have to deal with poorer outcomes. We're trying to proactively address some of the infant mortality concerns, some of the postpartum risks that we have in our community. Flint and Genesee County is a very high-risk area with vulnerable populations, and we cannot decrease people's access. We need to improve the funding for programs like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hi, my name's Tracy Schindler. I'm not a county of, I'm not a, I don't live in Flint currently, but I grew up in Flint. My son lived in Flint. My son overdosed back in December, so I'm here to speak towards one of the proposals that's up to be discussed tonight and voted on to honor the people who've lost their lives to addiction. The statistics are still very staggering, and I think that it's important that we honor those people who lost their lives. He wasn't just a drug addict. He was, he struggled with addiction for a number of years. He was trying to find recovery. He was a father to three children. He's a stepfather to two other children. He was my son. Our, you know, he was a brother. He was employer, I mean employee. And he was a contractor. He worked very hard. People who worked with him loved him. He's a musician. He was a gifted person. And he rode bikes. He played drums. He was loved by all of his friends and his family, and he's very missed. And if we can honor those people that have lost their lives to addiction and bring some awareness to this epidemic, then maybe some other family might not have to go through what we go through every day of our lives, having this absence at our tables, in this absence in our life. So I'm here to support that proposal today. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Melanie. I live here in Flint. I also work here in Flint. I came to speak on overdose awareness as well. I am a mother of three. I am a wife. I am a friend, but I'm also a person in long-term recovery. I'm an SUD professional, harm reduction specialist, and I'm also a multiple overdose survivor. A peek into my journey of recovery and addiction. I was born addicted. I was raised in addiction. At that time, for many years, I had no self-worth, no self-esteem, no confidence. I could never amount to anything or ever have a purpose, and that's what the world and the stigma behind drug addiction beat into me for many years. The first time I had overdosed, I was 26 years old. My last overdose occurred when I was 36, with 11 in between that. I've been through 27 treatment centers and spent over a decade of my life incarcerated. I was one who was to be forgotten. I was deemed worthless. But you know, there was people that didn't think so. Other addicts in recovery like me, who encouraged me over the years, loved me when I couldn't love myself. First responders, the police, who gave my life back many times. A lady who found me on the street and gave me Narcan, a lady that never was affected by addiction but was willing to take one just in case. I have used Narcan in my recovery and active addiction over 100 times. I have helped save many people and gave them a chance at life and a chance at recovery. I have also watched the life drain from people. I have heard the horrid screams of mothers whose childrens have passed, and I have been in the trenches and in the war against the opioid epidemic my whole life. I am still fighting every day for that life and for others like me, for their parents and their children, and the friends who have loved ones in addiction. I work and I live a recovery program. I am a certified recovery coach now at New Pass. I am a part of the Genesee County Quick Response Team. I am no longer worthless. I have a purpose today. My children have their mother who they are proud of. I advocate today, and I am always and always will be a voice for the voiceless. If your loved one is struggling, I will be there for them. If your loved one passes, I will forever be their voice, and I can promise you that. Overdose awareness is that day to honor and those who have died or have been through an overdose, acknowledging the grief that comes to the families and friends that are left behind. It provides that platform to share stories, to help reduce the stigma that's always associated with drug-related deaths. The acknowledgement of the heartbreak and the resilience that those impacted by overdose. We never asked to be addicts. We don't welcome the suffering, and neither do our families, but it happens to every walk of life. I have many friends and loved ones who have passed from an overdose, including my own mother. I speak for them today. They will never be forgotten. I will forever be their voice. To honor them and that extra love and care for their family and friends, we could let them, let them know every life matters, every memory matters, every candle lit and every balloon released is a piece of someone's heart, and that life mattered. I do have a purpose today, and I am loved. I survived. My friends survived, and our life and our stories matter. To those we lost, we love you and will honor you until we meet again. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Caitlin Anglis. I'm a resident of Monday Township, and I work for Greater Flint Health Coalition. I'm here to ask you to support the resolution recognizing overdose awareness day in Genesee County. Did you know that in 2023, 233 people in our community died from fentanyl overdose? In addition to that, 730 overdoses were reversed by the use of Narcan. Thanks to, I apologize, I just lost my place. Thanks to Narcan, it gave those individuals a second chance at life and eased some of the emotional burden carried not only by families but by our first responders who show up to these scenes every day. Awareness, overdose awareness day is not just about grief. It's about prevention as well. It's about protecting lives before it becomes a 911 call. It's about education, reducing stigma, and making our community safer, not just for those struggling with addiction, but for the firefighters, paramedics, law enforcement officers, and 911 operators who take and respond to these calls again and again. Every overdose response puts our first responders at risk emotionally and physically. Awareness means fewer emergencies, less burnout, and more informed, and a more informed public that can help share in the responsibility of saving lives of those around them. This resolution makes a powerful statement that Genesee County is paying attention, that we care, and that we are ready to lead with compassion and common sense in facing a crisis that touches every corner of our county, state, and country. As public servants, I urge you, and please take the time to truly educate yourselves on this issue. Vote yes, not just for families, but for our first responders, our veterans, and for the lives of people that we still have a chance to save. I also ask that you remember that the only way to bring change to this crisis is to act on it and not to ignore it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa, and I am a person in long-term recovery. I'm also here to speak on overdose awareness day. I'm also a peer recovery coach in the Genesee County Jail. I have lost a lot of family members, a lot of friends, in addiction. Overdose Awareness Day is important because it will honor all of our friends, family members that we have lost to addiction, but also to help reduce the stigma, to hopefully inspire people to come in and get treatment, to get help, and to get into recovery. By recognizing the overdose awareness day, Genesee County would send a powerful message of compassion, hope, and commitment to the residents impacted by the overdose crisis. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Faulkner, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Genesee County Prevention Coalition. And I'm just here to thank you for considering this proclamation to support and recognize overdose awareness day here in Genesee County. As your prevention coalition for the county, we bring together community partners across the continuum of prevention, treatment, and recovery support. And since for the past four years, we've been pulling together our resources, which are still very limited, to bring awareness of this issue to our community, to celebrate the lives of those that we have lost, but also to bring to support to the family members who are left to grieve and to continue, continue on with the impact that the opioid epidemic still has in our community. So I think with the proclamation, it will bring more awareness, more opportunity for collaboration and support, not just for the issue but for the family members and friends that are impacted by this issue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee or commission? Anyone else that'd like to address the commission? Is there anyone else like to address the commission? Okay, public comment is closed. Move on to communications. No action is needed for EP 25-002. We have no reports from the standing committees, and I will move on to the Board of Commissioners. Resolution 2025-1998, decision on whether to grant or deny an appeal of the Freedom of Information Act, request denial. I will turn it over to our Corporation Council at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, FOIA allows people to request public records from public bodies. In this case, a law firm requested a report about a motor vehicle accident. And Monica, your FOIA specialist, she, there was a record. It's a two-page record that has to be filled out for all accidents. She gave out the record, but she redacted certain information, home addresses, dates of birth, and driver's license numbers. And FOIA allows that stuff to be redacted under, it allows redaction of information of a personal nature, if public disclosure of the information would constitute a clearly unwarranted invasion of an individual's privacy. There's case law that says home addresses, dates of birth, home phone numbers are an invasion of privacy. So FOIA, if you redact information, FOIA considers that a denial. So the appeal tonight is a request, the law firm is asking for the home address of the driver that's at fault. I spoke with Monica. She stands behind her decision. She redacts that personal information from every, every record that she gives out. And the law allows it. She didn't do anything wrong. My recommendation would be to deny the appeal, mostly because she didn't do anything wrong. FOIA allows it. And once Monica or this board starts making exceptions for people, we run into problems of being accused of giving people preferential treatment or discriminating against others. So my recommendation would be to deny the appeal and uphold the FOIA specialist's decision.
Need a motion so we can discuss this item.
Move.
Support. I have a motion to support. Any discussion on this? We'll need a motion then to take Corporation Council's recommendation then, if there's no discussion. Is that what this last portion is? To deny. Okay, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Okay. So to be clear, we're denying the request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will turn this over to Community Economic Development. Dr. Beverly Brown, chairperson. Dale Wayhill, vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 2025-1939, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the sports facilities companies in an amount not to exceed $44,800 to provide detailed market research, opinion of cost, and pro forma for a potential sports complex. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accommodations tax.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? There's no discussion. I'd just like to clarify. Last meeting, there was some discussion on whether it was the same company we'd hired before, and information had been brought to us that it is not, just to clarify that. And if no one else has anything to add, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Is there any report you'd like to get?
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Now on to Finances Committee. Artie Kuznow, chairperson. Gary Gunsit, your vice chair.
I move Resolution 25-1867, approval to create, post, and fill three police deputy positions to provide security for the Genesee County Towers Building.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-1872, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending, 525-25, 6125, 6825, in the total amount of $8,431,989.75.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Move Resolution 25-1920, notice of intent to sell bonds.
Support. A motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Move Resolution 25-1954, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the 2425 Appropriations Resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Move Resolution 25-1956, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2425 Appropriation Resolution reallocating expenditures within the community corrections budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-1961, approval of a budget amendment for an additional $25,000 in the service contracts line item, ending in point 0044, FY 2425, and to authorize the annual payment to Carpal Solutions for the cost of the prosecutor's records document management system, otherwise known as Prosecutor by Capel, in the amount of $85,000.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-1964, approval of a purchase order with advance local media in the amount of $11,224.99 to provide for HPV vaccine communications campaign for Genesee County's Health Department.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move Resolution 24-1967, approval of FY 2526, childcare fund, annual plan and budget.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Any report to this committee or commission?
Not at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now on to Government Operations Committee. Dale Wayhill, chairperson. Sean Schumaker, vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 2025-1369, approval of an update to Genesee County's vehicle operation and driving for work policy.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I'll just say, Mr. Chair, that what I'll repeat what I said last week. This has been on our docket for probably a couple of months. Some good discussion, I think, with the sheriff's office, and listened to them closely, made some changes based on their input. Not every change that they asked for was in fact made by us because we're trying to make sure that we also protect the county from exposure and liability. So, but we think we ended up, as you know, because you were there, in a good place. So I'm supporting this.
Any other, anyone else would like to discuss this? Well, I would like, if there's no one else, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who participated. And our goal with this was not to impede any of our departments doing business, but we must do what is necessary to protect the county as far as risk, because once, and as always, as I say, it's not our money, it's their money. So I want to thank also not just Sheriff's Department, but I also want to thank Katie for all of her hard work and dealing with us and frustration at times she had with everything, but I appreciate her hard work. So with that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1751, approval of a grant award from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation in the amount of $1.2 million to provide for Operation Arrowhead. The term of this grant is from August 1st, 2025, through July 31st, 2026.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I don't see the undersheriff or Captain Murphy. Is there anyone from the sheriff? Captain, are you able to speak to this or? Okay. I had some, I texted back and forth with the sheriff, and he's not able to make it tonight, but he indicated he'd have some representation. Would you just talk to us about what you think are the successes of Arrowhead, given that we've had it for a couple of years now, and also some of the challenges that you all have faced?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, our guys are working hard every day out there. They're covering approximately 10 square miles of the city to, you know, help relieve some of the stress and burden on the Flint City Police Department. You know, I think they've answered over 16,000 calls in that time, arrested over, I think, 4,000 people, cleared up thousands and thousands of warrants. But beyond that, they're making contacts, neighborhood checks, business checks, doing everything we can to keep this downtown area and a little bit of the surrounding safe. You know, here we have three different colleges that we're trying to help out and make sure that area is safe for them. So we have definitely, I don't have statistic numbers, definitely helped keep crime down in this area.
Will you remind us of the, the borders of that 10 square miles? It started out smaller. It was the downtown quarter.
Basically right in the downtown, and we have expanded. So it kind of goes up to like Fifth Avenue, the river, Robert T. That's kind of that barrier. It includes Hurley Hospital, Dort Highway, and then to the west, it would almost be the city limit, and then Lapeer to the south.
And if you would tell us how many personnel are part of it, and kind of what the shifts look like, and maybe a little bit about how it works. So if I'm So if I'm, let's say I'm a business owner or a homeowner, not a homeowner, but a person who lives downtown, renting, and I have an emergency, I call 911, that goes into the 911 center, how does that make its way to Arrowhead?
Yeah, so we'll start with the staffing. We currently have seven deputies assigned, a lieutenant who's the commander, a patrol sergeant, and then a patrol detective sergeant. So, you know, if you call 911, it's going to get dispatched to whoever's in the area first. That could be the sheriff's office, the state police, obviously Flint City Police, U of M. Flint. If Arrowhead's not on, those will be dispatched or our other officers that are in the area. If our guys aren't on, it's a non-emergency, they can call county radio, and we'll send a deputy that way. If, I'm sorry, sir, what was the other question? I apologize.
I think you answered it. You answered the number of staff members, and then you talked about how the 911 works. Let me ask you, I know my district doesn't include downtown Flint. That's where we started this, and it was a way of protecting the county seat. There's obviously a lot going on down here that we want to make sure people feel safe when they come to conduct business, you know, either at this building or other buildings. I know that there's been some issues with maybe late-night loitering and loud noises and partying on the streets sometimes, even well into the night, so one or two in the morning. Has Arrowhead been involved in addressing any of that? If not, why not? And is there progress to be made in that area?
Yeah, with that, absolutely, they have helped. You know, it's not 24/7 with Arrowhead, so we adjust the schedule as we see fit. You know, if on the weekend they're having an event during the day, we'll change their schedule so they're here there. If not, we'll have them work later to kind of combat those late-night parties. I think when it first started, those late-night, you know, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM calls were a lot higher, and now they're kind of going down, and I attribute that not only to our Arrowhead guys, but Flint City, U of M. Flint, and the state troopers.
I guess last question. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair. If there are people who want to not call 911, but want to talk to you about issues that they've seen that maybe either Flint City PD or you all haven't addressed yet or maybe not addressed in the way that they would want, what's the best way? Who's the person to reach out to for Arrowhead? And could you state some contact information?
Absolutely. So they could call our county radio, that's 810-257-3422, or they could shoot an email to myself. It's jmurphy@geneseecountymi.gov.
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate it. And then I think my next question, or last one truly, is to Mr. Freeman. Is this the last year, so far as we know, or we're not certain? I know Mott Foundation, they're not requiring a match this year, as I understand it. Do we have a sense of whether this might be our final go-around with this?
I think they're in the middle of their strategic planning process right now, and they've indicated that everything is on the table in terms of thinking differently next year and what they prioritize.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to thank the board for, you know, working with us on this, and Mott Foundation for a good partnership. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Anyone else would like to add anything? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wayhill, for all the questions. That being said, just to let everyone know, this grant has been down here before. It required a match before, and we used American Rescue Plan dollars for the match. This year, we didn't have those available, so the Mott Foundation was gracious enough to work with us and actually still continue with the grant without those dollars, so the program will continue. So I'd just like to thank the Mott Foundation for that. Now, if no one else has anything else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1815, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and United Way of Northwest Michigan in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to provide for the Genesee County Employee Tri-share Program. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I move Resolution 2025-1841, approval of a contract addendum to software hosting agreement with Global Vision Technologies to provide augmentation to case management software. The cost of this addendum is $9,062.50 and will be paid from the account listed.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1877, approval of a request by Genesee County Sheriff's Department, excuse me, to accept the 2025 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement from the Michigan DNR in the amount of $14,950.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1909, approval of an amendment, number one, to the acceptance of access and visitation grant from the State Court Administrative Office for the FY ending in 2025.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1931, approval of a request by Genesee County Prosecutor's Office to apply for the 2026 Crime Victim Rights Grant from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1945, approval of the annual S.A.A.G.S., self-funding insurance resolution.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1951, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Mount Morris Consolidated Schools in an amount not to exceed $240,000 to provide educational services for the court, community, educational programs at the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this agreement is July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask Sam Olson to come up and give a little more detail. This was something that was questioned in committee, and we had some follow-up questions that I'm hoping to get more insight to now about the program that is provided through Mount Morris Schools. And so I understand that it's a $240,000 amount. Can you clarify that amount for us?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The contract as prepared allocates $100,000 for services at the Juvenile Justice Center, $140,000 for services at the learning co-op locations. Just some context, with most school funding situations, it's a projection. And so this is a childcare fund-covered area, educational services for court-involved youth. And the way we've structured our funding mechanism with Mount Morris is the court only pays for any, they're the last ones to pay if there's a shortfall in this programming. So Mount Morris will get their general revenue from their schooling, will apply for grants locally and federally for this particular cohort of youth. And then at the end of the school year, any shortfall that exists in these two areas, the court will pay consistent with this contract from the child, of which would be the childcare fund. So $240,000 is a conservative, but I'll argue responsible number. The last four years, looking back historically, none of the years exceeded $215,000 in totality. Last year was about $193,000, the year before about $187,000, the year before $153,000. So of course, there's varying numbers based on student count and grant availability and things of that nature. So it's not as if the court is paying the $240,000 and then the other things are saved otherwise, it's the other way around. Hopefully that gives some.
So it's a reimbursement model?
It's a reimbursement model consistent with the requirements of the childcare fund.
Okay.
So for the, any dollar spent in this particular area, if the youth that are being served are in the Juvenile Justice Center for detention, that's a 50% reimbursement rate on that amount from the state of Michigan. For those in the community and the day treatment programs, it's a 75% reimbursement amount. So the figures that I've just discussed, it's not even that amount that the court's paying, if that makes sense. There's still a reimbursement on that.
And one more question, if I could, Mr. Chair. The other question that came up was about performance of the students, and can you talk a little bit about the timeframe that they are typically in, the care there, and then whether or not there's a performance metric built into the contract with the school district?
That's a good question as well. So I had the opportunity to review with our partners at Mount Morris, and it's, they do a number of performance measures for the students. Of course, there's exit and success surveys and things of that nature, but also they will analyze, obviously, credits earned, credits recovered, and credits accumulated during their time at the Juvenile Justice Center or in programming. So myself and Chad Sharp is with us here from the Juvenile Justice Center. He can speak with more particularity to the actual services at the Juvenile Justice Center because Mr. Sharp works intimately with the folks at Mount Morris and on the other providers. So with respect to performance, I don't want to talk out of term for that cohort.
Thank you. So considering that our school is part of our program, they're very embedded with our kids, so they're a part of our treatment programming, so our staff do a lot of treatment, cognitive behavioral, and we do a lot of shared training. So even the teachers are trained, the same as staff, in these programs. So our teachers do attend the training, not the training, but the cognitive behavioral training, but they also participate in our team or our treatment planning. So they help us understand what maybe the kids are struggling with academically, or if we have IEPs that we have to address, so the teachers are a part of that. We do a exit survey with every youth. 96% of the kids say they feel that the school is really providing services to them. They like the schooling. One thing that is important to know is that we're all year-round, so our kids go to school in the center the entire year. So they do make up a lot of credits that they might not receive, why they're in the public or in the community. And then also, I know the Mount Morris School teachers work with teachers from other districts or other schools to make sure that credits are transferred and the kids get the education that they need.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to discuss anything or have any questions? With that being said, then, last week, I was one of them that had a few questions, and mine were along the lines of how do we measure success? Because earning a certificate, I mean, my children went to school during COVID, and I can tell you right now, they got As and Bs, and I'm going to tell you right now, they learned nothing. I watched them sleep through most of their classes. So earning a certificate means very little to me watching how this goes down. What I would like to know, and I ask questions on this, and this year, we're too close to the finish line to actually pull this off, but I would like to see metrics on how we measure success, not just certificate, but whether they're proficient enough, they can enter a local community college, or they can enter U of M. Flint, and they're ready to take classes instead of having to take catch-up classes, you know, to make sure they're ready for college or anything else like that. So before we go into this next year, one, I'd like to see it brought to us earlier than July, you know, and we start, that's for purchasing, not for you guys, but for purchasing. I would like us to look into this, to maybe send it out for bids for other schools, because I believe maybe there's other schools that could look at it a little differently, maybe do things different. We should always give people that option. But also, I would like to figure out some way through this next year, before we do the next contract, to figure out a way to measure whether we're doing these students and these individuals justice. They need our help. They need us to move them forward, and if this system isn't the best process for them, Mount Morris Schools, and maybe it is, maybe we find something else. But for now, like I said, I'm going to support it because we've got to get it done because school is year-round, and guess what? We're going, and the contract started in July, but by next year, I'd like to see this a little earlier, and I'd also like to have some metrics. So thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
That being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1960, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Peacekeepers International in an amount not to exceed $40,000 to provide training to 100 police officers and 100 community members in bias and sensitivity training. This is a grant-funded agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. I would like to thank everyone who had questions last week, and I received some emails and some conversations over this. I wish the details of the training would have been a little more in-depth, but I was happy with what I had, so I'll be voting to move it forward. So with that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-1968, approval to extend the contract approved in Resolution Number 2024-629 with the Mott Foundation and Genesee County to provide police services to a 10-square-mile area within the city of Flint.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-2005, approval to recognize overdose awareness stay in Genesee County.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, so I read this last week. I will not read it again, but I am going to ask Marlene if she would come to the microphone and just say a few words about the importance of this. Obviously, we had folks who are in the recovery community, family members of people who have been affected by this, professionals in the field speak under public comment, but she's our point person at the county for the opioid steering committee, and with your permission, I'd like her to be able to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Marlene Colick. I'm the deputy director of community corrections for this great county, Genesee. I read honestly, on behalf of Michelle Ryder, who is unable to be here this evening, I want to share a story, not just about loss, but about the long shadow the substance use disorder can cast over entire families. Kelly Ryder was my husband's first wife. She was a nurse. She spent years caring for others, but behind the scenes, she was fighting a losing battle with opioid addiction. Like so many in her profession, her use began with a car accident and prescription painkillers. Eventually, she lost her nursing license, and despite efforts to find recovery through Narcotics Anonymous, Kelly continued to struggle. On March 3, 2013, Kelly died of a fentanyl overdose. She was using fentanyl patches in the most dangerous way possible, absorbing them through her mouth. She left behind three children. Two of them were still minors. One of them, her 16-year-old son, Steven, was home when it happened. Steven's father passed away in 2007, and suddenly had no mother and nowhere to go. My husband, Travis, was granted custody, and that's when I entered the picture. It was a painful, rocky start. Steven was grieving, depressed, and angry. He didn't know how to process what had happened, and I was a stranger trying to help raise the son of a woman I had never met, but whose loss I felt every day in our home. One day, I told Steven, I know I'll never replace your mother, but the truth is, she's not here and I am, so I'm your mom's villain. I'm your mom now. He smiled. That moment changed our relationship, and we've been close ever since. I love him like my own. Today, Steven is 28. He still carries the trauma of losing his mom, but he's on a better path. He is trying, and most importantly, he survived. he survived. But not everyone did. Kelly's oldest daughter, Stephanie, died of an overdose in 2023 at the age of 31, leaving behind two young children. Her youngest daughter, Molly, was just nine when her mom died. She was raised by her father in a home with instability and substance use, and at 21, she is still navigating the impact of a childhood shaped by trauma. I never met Kelly, but her death changed the course of my life. It shaped the way I tried to raise her son. It showed me up close how addiction doesn't just affect one person. It devastates families for generations. This is why I speak today. This is why we need local governments, schools, health systems, and entire communities to treat addiction like the public crisis it is. We need Narcan in every public space. We need funding for mental health services, harm reduction, and family support. And we need to honor and remember those we've lost, not with silence, but with action. That's why this resolution means so much to people all throughout the country. Addiction isn't a moral failure, and recovery is possible, but only if people survive long enough to reach it. I share this honor of Kelly, Stephanie, and the millions of others' lives touched and taken by substance use disorder, and I share it for Steven, who still lives with the pain, but also with hope. I, Marlene, am a person in long-term recovery. 23 years ago, I overdosed. I am a non-fatal overdose, and surprisingly, Narcan saved my life in the hospital. And today, it's out in the community, and humans are saving lives with that. I'm honored to bring this resolution to you guys, and I say that because I see counterparts in the nation celebrating what I've been wanting to celebrate for a long time now, not just with my heart homies here that are still on this earth, but the souls that have to go back and come back and reissue into this life term and then change generational trauma from here on point. So I appreciate you guys. You know, I adore you guys, and I know that this resolution will go the way it will be, and we will light up our community and our county on April 30, August, April, let me come forward, August 31 of 2025, for the first time in this county this year. I thank you. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else who would like to add anything to that? Tough act to follow. But with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Is there any report at this time, Mr. Chair?
Just a quick announcement. I'm not sure if anyone else was going to mention it, but there is going to be a public ceremony at the new tower building on July 31 at 9:30 in the morning on the front porch. I'll just call it that for now, where there will be a ribbon cut, and the public is welcome to come and participate in that celebration. I did go on a tour this morning that Josh Freeman and Jared Field put on for me and some elected officials from my district, and I can say the building's coming along and hoping it's done by the first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good Lord willing, you all will be the last people to attend a meeting in this auditorium. So that's, Josh is telling me it's going to happen, so we'll see if we can hold him to it. With that, we'll move on to Human Services Committee, Charles Winfrey, chairperson, James Avery, vice chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution 251880, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Beecher Board of Education in an amount not to exceed $740,896 to provide for an early Head Start program within the Beecher School District.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251882, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the CS Mott Community College in an amount not to exceed $157,760 to provide for an early Head Start program at Mott Community College. Term of this agreement is July 1, 25 through June 30, 26. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining on the motion. Mott Community College is my employer.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion abstained.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251889, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Go Beyond, a Well Family System EMR, in an amount not to exceed $10,450 to provide data review and reporting for Genesee County's Healthy Start Initiative. The term of this agreement is August 1, 25 through July 31, 26.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251901, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Shanti Derhon Smith, Derhon Smith, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to provide doula-adjacent training and professional development to the daddy as a doula facilitator. The term of this agreement is June 1, 25 through May 31, 27. It's fully grant-funded.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251903, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Involved Dad in an amount not to exceed $48,000 to provide for education and training for expectant fathers. The term of this agreement is June 1, 25 through May 31, 27, and it's fully grant-funded.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? With that, I just have one question with this. June 1st was a while back. Is there a reason we're getting this so late? Thank you, Josh.
Hello. So I'm Michelle Estelle from the Health Department. We just received this grant. This is the one we just applied for. Obviously, with everything that's going on, we're still looking for ways to bring in funding, so we just received this award.
Is this a new program or an existing program?
The, yes, this is a new program. Yes, this is a new program.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251938, approval of an agreement between Michigan State University for its College of Human Medicine in Genesee County to provide for a clinical training affiliation that encompasses all Michigan State University undergraduate medical programs.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251959, approval of an agreement between, to a contract between Genesee County and V AAA in the amount of $73,997 to provide additional training for home-delivered and congregate meals for Genesee County seniors.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't have any particular questions about this resolution, but I did want to ask if Director Coleman might step forward. I asked her after the last meeting last week after committee, knowing that this topic would be on here, if she would provide some data to me, which she has done about usage of home-delivered service for the meals and the congregate meals. And I think it's always a good reminder, given the scope of what we're doing here, to remind ourselves of how many people take advantage of this in a way that is helpful to them and supports their, obviously, their daily intake of calories, but also their health and their well-being. So Director Coleman, you gave, I have this from you, I believe.
Yes, sir.
No one else has it, as I understand, because I'm the only one that asked for it, but would you talk about the numbers of people served through congregate and the delivered, home-delivered meals?
Absolutely. Good evening, Pamela Coleman, Director for G Card. We serve approximately between 3,000 and 3,500 individuals through our congregate meal program per month. That has fluctuated in a little bit. It has decreased due to one of our congregate sites hassle-bring, still trying to get their licensing issues resolved and get their site fully operational. But on the average, it's been about 3,500, we'll say, an average of 3,500 individuals per month who depend on the congregate program. We've had some funding issues that we were able to resolve, thankful for this board who were able, you all were able to issue that resolution to assist us for the four months that were needed while Valley was able to shore up their funding. You all, on an average, the board's resolution assisted about 800 individuals with a meal for, from the months of February and May. Without that additional funding and support, that would have been about 3,200 meals that seniors would not have received during that time period. So this program, the congregate meal program, is super important. Not only does it assist seniors in the ability to congregate, to check up on each other, the ability to maintain their ability to get out, remain mobile, increase, I mean, it increases their health and their overall lifestyle, them getting out, remaining mobile, remaining social. It's very important to the health of seniors. So to be able to continue this program has been a great advantage. And again, I want to say to this board, thank you so much. It was greatly appreciated for you all to step in and offer that support where it was needed until we received that additional funding from Valley. Because of you, those seniors were able to continue to participate in these programs.
Mr. Chair, if I might, and on the home-delivered side, Director Coleman, could you speak to how many people receive home-delivered meals? So the congregate take place in person, and those are at the senior centers. I know that some of the data I have here indicates home-delivered. Are you able to speak to that at all?
Absolutely. We have, we are currently serving just over, just shy of 800 individuals in their residence to keep them in their residence. That's the purpose of that program, so that they are able to sustain their, I'm sorry, they don't have to go to assisted living facilities, but they don't have the ability to prepare their meals, nor do they have anyone who's able to come in and prepare the meals for them. So they receive two meals from us every day. Some are on different cadences for the week. Some receive three meals, some receive five. We have some individuals who have, who receive hot meals and Ensure, if they have a prescription from their doctors, to supplement their nutritious dietary intake. So again, we serve about 800, just shy of 800 of those individuals every month. We have been trying to get those numbers up, but for various reasons, when we, we started out with a waitlist of approximately 500, we are down to 89 at this time. That is due to whenever someone falls off, we reach out to Valley, they do the assessments, and we bring those clients on, wanting to make sure that there is no one out there waiting. Again, various reasons that they are, a lot of times during this time of year, for what some are going on vacation. I really can't speculate too much, but I know some go and they spend time with family members, so they fall off for those reasons. Some are hospitalized, so they may fall off for those reasons. But again, we have been working diligently to make sure that no one is waiting for a meal, and we are on task to split, well, we're actually under-spending for that program for this fiscal year due to the inability to keep clients on.
Thank you, Director Coleman. I appreciate what you and G Card does for seniors and others in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone else that would like to add anything? Thank you, Pam. That being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 251965, approval of a water residential assistance program grant in the amount of $27,000 to provide water payment assistance to eligible City of Flint residents. The budget for this is attached.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 252007, approval of a resolution that supports the continuation of funding for the Healthy Start Initiative.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I might, this is another one where I asked a department head if she would pull some data for us after last week's committee meeting. And Michelle Estelle from Department of Public Health, I don't, Michelle, if you would approach, I've got some of the numbers in front of me, but I guess what I'll say is, every, it seems to me that every zip code in the county has some people that are benefiting from Healthy Start. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And it's not always pregnant women. It could be others in the household.
Yes.
That benefit from the program.
Yes.
And the purpose of the program is to reduce mortality among pregnant mothers and mortality of the infants that are born.
Yes.
And over the years, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to help the family, to provide an overall family, you know, to help the fathers, to help the mothers, all the caregivers.
Right. And then, I guess, one of the most important statistics is that since we've been offering Healthy Start, it appears to me that the infant deaths have dropped.
Yes.
Is that each year?
In 2024, we had no infant mortality deaths of individuals enrolled in the program. So this is referring to the individuals.
Thank you for pulling this together. I know it's not an easy task. I had asked her if she could pull it by commission district. Every zip code is represented. You know, obviously, it's up and down among the zip codes depending on, you know, which, what area of the county. But I think it's safe to say that every commission district has people that are benefiting from this program, and infants that are yet to be born benefiting from this program. So I thank you for pulling the data, and I'll associate myself with Dr. Brown's remarks from last week, which were, I think, quite articulate and powerful about our role to support these kinds of things. This is obviously sort of just a sense of the commission resolution. It's not, doesn't have any binding effect, but it certainly demonstrates that this is an important program for us and our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wayhull, are you finished?
Yes, hold on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to add to Commissioner Wayhull's comments and also have Michelle just briefly talk about, because we had a conversation too, just for my clarification about the program. And I, my understanding is that the program brings in about $1 million to Genesee County, and part of that $1 million that we get is used to execute contracts with some important partners. Can you talk about those partners?
So some of the partners include Ascension, Hurley, several that you voted on today, Go Beyond, we have Global, we have Involved Dad, Shawna Lee, and now we have, we've just added a new program. So what we do is for some, it actually funds the individuals working in it fully or partially. So we work with the, one is for the electronic record system, one is for social, with the hospitals. We have social workers and nurses going into the homes. We also fund our staff in the program. So we have eight staff in the program. Two are empty now. We are scared, you know, to fund them. So obviously, others are tanking on the work right now. We also work with Voices of, Voices for Children, Shawna Lee, Global, and Hurley. So, and in different amounts to provide different services. So we have services for mental health as well.
And the other thing that you shared is that it's actually cheaper for us to contract with these partners than it would be for us to do it ourselves.
For the nursing, yes, because our nurses don't do the in-home care for this purpose. One of the things that I needed to clarify, and our director is there, she does a great job. She's worked in the program for at least 10 years, and now she's the director, is we actually bring in $997,416,000, I mean, $416 a year in this program. So if we lose this funding, and we are in the second year of this grant, and we have had this grant since 2000, but we are required to reapply every, every five years. And in this, in this term, I will say, for the grant, we, many other health departments lost the funding, but we did get ours with lots of compliments on our program. So, which we brought to you and did a presentation on previously at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the, and the nature of this program in terms of helping families across Genesee County in a holistic manner. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown, are you all set?
I'm set.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Well, that, I'm going to take my turn at it. There's a couple things in here. I, I'm, Healthy Start, I think it's a great program. I watched a video with the Secretary of Health state that they weren't going to cut any funds from this. So this resolution coming before me is a little shocking. I think it's a little political. I'm a little irritated by it because last year, this board had to take action and fund a food program that the state of Michigan had cut, and we didn't offer to And we didn't offer to send any letters or point out that the governor was, this is part of her budget when this was cut, and list any names. So it looks just a little political to me, because we didn't want to take any action then, when that was cut, and we had to step up and we had to use Senior Village funds to fund those. And I'm sure everybody remembers that. We didn't want to send any letters out to anybody, because guess what, maybe that's your party and you didn't want to do this. So I'm, I'm not opposed to sending a letter saying we need these programs. Not opposed to that. But when you name political figures and so on and so forth, I think it becomes partisan. And down here, you know, we try to shake that, we say we do, but sometimes it just keeps popping up. And then on top, I did watch the video with the Health Secretary saying, "We're not cutting it," so I'm a little confused. And do we know, do we know where we heard this from, other than media sources? Is there part of, is there a portion of the actual bill they put through that we can cite and state that they're actually gonna do this, before we instill panic, or is there something we can do?
We've actually received, we've actually received notification from the state and the federal government. And, you know, and letters from all the hospitals and different programs, you know, ask, obviously, the federal government can't ask you to advocate for the program, but requests for advocating for the program. So yes, we have received, these are the potential cuts for the program. And with some, they held and say, "We will get this once we find out what happens."
But these are letters requesting, these are not actual, there's nothing as far as the bill, a bill you've seen that is rolled across anyone's desk, whether House Representatives or even at the, at the federal level, that this is gonna be cut?
No, not yet. There's a potential for cuts. And we have to wait. And some of the funding is kinda in limbo until we find out whether we're getting it or not.
My next question is this. You said funding was cut from other counties last year?
They didn't receive the grant.
They didn't receive the grants?
Yes, they lost the grant. I guess they were not approved, their submittals were not approved.
And that would have been the?
Several counties.
That would have been 2024, 2025 budget then?
Wait, can you?
Would that be the 2024, 2025 budget then, that they were denied that with?
Yes, the most recent.
So before?
Well, it actually would have been 2023 and 2024. It's a five-year grant, so it's, you know, goes for five years.
Okay. So these cuts have taken place before even the current administration was in office? If it's 2023, 2024?
They didn't get the grant. It wasn't a cut, they didn't get approved for the grant. So you have to submit every five years, and then they didn't get approved for it. So their submittals weren't accepted.
And ours is up, our five years is up this year?
No, in three years. We're in the second year of a five-year grant. So we were granted, we were granted again, and now we're in the second year, and we have three more years after this.
So we're getting funding for three more years? We're concerned with those funds being taken?
So, to give you an example, we get the funding for the entire fiscal year, and their fiscal year is a little different. So it goes from April 1st through, I mean, I'm sorry, is it March 30th? Oh, here you go.
She's like, I'm right here.
Yeah, so March 30th.
It's April 1st through March 31st.
Okay. And basically, we get the 997 for the year to spend. They gave part of it, the other part is being held. And basically, we had a conversation with them, and they said, "We will see if this is still coming through, and if it comes through, you will get the second half, but we have to work within these guidelines." So if we don't get the other half, then we will definitely have to cut contracts and cut staff, because there are percentages that you have to meet for each type of service we're providing.
So it's not that the funds aren't available, it's a fact whether we can be approved or not approved?
They were initially approved. It's, they are, they have not been distributed to us yet.
So we're, for me to understand this, so we're worried that those funds that were already authorized to us
Yes.
are gonna be cut?
Yes.
Moving forward, even though the grant is, or even though the grant for the additional three years has already been approved?
Yes.
We got our five years.
Yes, we received for five years, and we were told there is the potential for that, without question.
But we have, we have not, other than the state sending us information, was it the State Health Department that sent the information?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I did receive a copy of the proposed federal budget for this coming fiscal year. And so what they proposed was that Healthy Start be eliminated because it's duplicative of other home visiting programs. So they are proposing that elimination for this coming fiscal year. So if that gets eliminated, then we don't get the other three years of our grant, even though it has been approved.
Question?
Yes.
Which budget did you see? The White House, the House, or the Senate?
So this is HHS's budget. So Healthy Start is discretionary funding. And so, like I said, they're proposing that they don't give us that funding anymore, that it's eliminated because it's duplicative.
Could, for me, if you could work with Josh and get me a copy of that, I would love to.
Yeah.
I would love to see it.
I've gotten it a million times, so I definitely can share it.
Okay, all right. I'm sure it's quite long, and it's tease. If you wanted to, you know, do me a favor and like highlight the areas, so I didn't have to go through all 3,000 pages probably, I'm pretty sure, or something like that, I'd be greatly appreciative. Like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to standing up for Healthy Start, but like I said, when you, when you list political figures, and I've said this to a former commissioner before, who was always on the attack of a certain president until it was hers, I said, "These are people that have voted for these people. They're very passionate about them one way or the other. If we want to have peace among ourselves, you don't go attacking someone that they're very partisan or biased towards. It doesn't set a good precedent that we're willing to work together." And she had to figure this individual in her office and stuffed with certain things around it. I didn't think it was appropriate if you'd bring residents back there. They might feel particularly about this. When the next president came in, I did not say anything about it. But like I said, if you wanted to remove the fact and change something with who, that it's just the president's budget from there, because it has to be approved by the Senate, it'll have to be approved by the House. It's not just gonna go through Donald Trump. Okay, there, we are, we have three groups that have to agree to this, you know, because we're, we've got other areas. We've got the Senate, the House, and the White House, which it'll come down to. So like I said, I just found it very partisan. I am glad that you were here to explain a lot of that to me. I'm glad we worked through it. Thank you for your patience with that. I would like to see it. I'm still not sure what we're looking forward. If you guys want to move forward with it tonight, I'm just to know, which is, which is fine. I think you probably have the votes to go from there. Or if you wanted to wait, I would like to look at what she's gonna send me before I even say that. But I also will still ask that we remove any partisan level to it and actually ask. We don't want these funds to be cut. It doesn't matter who's in there, we don't want these funds to be cut. And that should be as simple as it should be. Then you'll get more, I think, unfortunately, to get more support with that. So that being said, I don't think there's the support for postponing this. So all those in favor on it?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that being said, do we have any report from?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. I see our chair has walked in. Would you like to take over?
No, sir, you're done to find job.
Well, thank you. All right, next up, Public Works Committee. Brian Fluelli, chairperson, James Avery, vice chairperson.
Move Resolution 20251838, approval of a purchase order to various vendors for fiscal years '25 and '26 in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to provide for candy, cider, donuts, and supplies for Crossroads Village Halloween program. Cost of this purchase will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Move Resolution 20251900, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Granicus to provide for legislative management software.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Resolution 20251950, approval of a request to sell a vacant lot, parcel 1424552189, located on West Yale Street, in the amount of $50.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Well, then I'll take my turn again at this. My problem with this is not the, part of it is the amount, $50 seems pretty cheap to me. But on top of the fact that we do not have a policy in place to how we handle these pieces of property, these parcels, whether we're gonna say they can't be resold, you know, in 20 years, or they have to be added to your current, you know, property, we have nothing in place. And what I would like to see moving forward is a policy that settles and talks about how we distribute of these assets as a county. Obviously, it's not our job to want to hold land. We want to put it back in the taxpayer's hand. But I would hope this would be something Public Works we could take up or Government Operations and come up with a policy on how to distribute this land when it's outside of the land bank. So, that being said, anyone else have anything to say?
Mr. Chair, I wonder if it might be better to start that policy draft in Public Works, given it's related, it's under this committee right now. I'm happy to give it some thought with you as vice chair of Governmental Operations, but there might be value in having this gentleman take a crack at it if he's interested.
Yeah.
If you're fine with that?
Put something together?
I'll guarantee there's probably other counties that have policies in place that we could look at and borrow. I know when we did the driving policy, the vehicle policy, we'd used others. So why not work through that? And I've talked to Josh earlier, and he understood that that's where I'm trying to come from, because like I said, whether it's worth $50, I don't know. Or if it's worth $2,000, we don't, we don't know. We can take an estimate, but we have no policy in place to determine that or what we're gonna do. So thank you for taking that up, Commissioner.
I have a question. Thank you. Just a, just a refresh, is this a, like, is this a vacant lot? Did this request come from the land bank? Where did this originate? It escapes me.
Yeah, this is a vacant lot up on Yale Street. The entire block is owned by a father and son. And this is one parcel within that block that was owned by Genesee County for a long period of time.
Yeah, I raise it because I know that, maybe there's a conversation, I'd be glad to have with like the treasurer's office as well, because, you know, like throughout my district anyway, there's a lot of individuals who request to purchase vacant lots that are next to their properties, behind their properties. There are folks who don't desire to, you know, to build on them, but they're already maintaining these lots, right? And I'm sure they're, you know, throughout various portions of the community. And, and you know, you hear a lot of times where, you know, people aren't able to purchase them, right? We also get calls about, you know, land bank properties or properties that parks are maintaining lots that may not be cut, or whatever case may be. We face this every year. And so it'd be good to know what our policy is once something is in place and coordinate with the treasurer's office as well, because, you know, it'd be good to make it easier for residents to be able to purchase lots, actually, especially if they're not lots that are gonna be developed next to folks' property and so on and so forth. So I just want to flag that I'm interested to see where that kind, that conversation goes. And I know that in partnering with residents to help maintain lots, it'd be a benefit for some for us to be able to, you know, give them to them for $1 or $50 or whatever the case may be. So I look forward to supporting this tonight for those, the father and son who already owns property. But I do agree that we should have a policy, so we all understand how that works. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? If there's no one else, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Okay, Resolution, I move Resolution 20251953, approval of a purchase order to Midstates Recreation for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $48,311 to provide engineered wood fiber at various county park locations. Cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Move Resolution 20251955, approval of an amendment to the service agreement with AT&amp;T.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Move Resolution, move Resolution 20251958, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and McCurci Enterprise Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $35,220 to provide for the installation of five backup generators at various county park locations. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion?
Mr. Chair? On this motion, or on this particular resolution, I had some discussion this more, or this afternoon with our Parks Director. This was bid out as kind of a, what is the word that I want to use? Kind of a unit pricing to install these. The price that you see there is an estimate. There may be some fluctuation in that cost depending on certain materials that they may need to use as they install. So we, we bid it out that way, but I want you to know that we're, we're expecting that it to come in this much, but it could be a little bit high, higher depending on the cost of materials when they actually start to install. Does that make sense?
It does, I don't like it, but it does. Is there any discussion with what Mr. Freeman had to add?
Just so you know, if you see this again down the road, for change on it.
If no one has anything to add, I'm gonna add something. So a little bit is a little bit like 500, or is a little bit like 5,000?
Patrick's out there, he can speak to that. I guess a little bit in my mind, and maybe the public's mind's a little bit different. A little bit. It's like the question of the question. Inside joke.
I would hope that it doesn't go over $10,000 for it. So when we bid out, when this was bid out, it was bid out for common items through it. So when the bid was looked at, pricing was looked at as far as that goes, but it was not included in the, in the final contract, because with some of that, we don't know exactly what it's going to be. So as we're going through some of the systems and that, and updating it, we don't know exactly what we're gonna run into.
But we do have unit pricing for that. So we know what the fixed cost is going to be if we need it. We just don't know what we're going to need as we get into that. So we've got a cost for that.
I was actually gonna raise my hand to speak. Am I crazy? Here, here's the problem I have with it. If it could be that much, why, why? We sent it out for bid to begin with.
Yep.
We had how many back? How many did we get back?
Seven.
Okay. What was the next closest to this?
$48,000.
How much?
I believe $48,000.
Okay. So they could be covering it all then at that point? These changes or no?
No, no, the bid was not written that way. So the, the bid was specifically written for labor costs. And then the materials were separate based on what could be anticipated.
Right, so if one company thinks they're gonna use 10 widgets at $100 apiece, the other company bid 10 widgets at $200 apiece. So we bid, we bid out, and I'm just using widgets.
I understand.
I don't think there's any widgets in putting a generator together.
Understood.
But we bid out the unit price for a widget, and then we, you know, say, "We think this is what it'll be." But if it's more, we have a locked-in price for what that more would be.
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand why we can't get a fairly accurate. We just proved generators for other parts of Genesee County, we had an accurate amount. I just don't understand what the difference is, and forgive me, you know, I just, I just want to understand, because 10, up to 10,000 is a lot. And someone might have come in with a different bid and said, "Hey, you know what? I'll guarantee I'll keep all of this below that if I get the opportunity to go, hey, I can go up another $10,000." So I'm just trying to understand. Is this something we could send back out? Is it time-sensitive, now that we know a little more what we need?
We, we could. But a lot of this is gonna be investigatory, so as they're in there, they're gonna find out more on what they need.
That's why we locked in on that unit pricing, a price upfront, so that they can't get in there and say, "Oh, well, we need 10 widgets, and say, oh, well, we need 10 widgets, but we're going to charge you $500 a widget. We've locked in a price, knowing that there's an unknown quantity of.
Materials is what you're saying. They don't know what's under there, which would seem, so that what they're saying is they don't know if they can use older stuff that's in there already, and then they might have to add new or whatever. Is that kind of where we're at?
Yep.
I just, I just don't feel comfortable giving somebody an open checkbook later on to say, hey, guess what? If you think you need this, we need this. Not that everybody does this, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but if it was my checkbook at my house, I'm going to make sure I know everything before I go in. So, I just, like I said, I, I'm going to vote no on this, because guess what? I think it should go, we should go back out. They should be able to give us a more accurate number than the 10 grand. You know, that's, you know, shoot, that's 30% of what this costs, basically, almost. So, it's, it's, you know, I'm a no. Does anyone else have anything to add before we vote on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Through you to Patrick. So, what are the, the variables and the intangibles here? Is it, is it electrical upgrades, gas line?
Yep.
What it takes to get into there?
Yeah, yeah, all that. So, with some of these buildings that we're doing, the administration office, the office at the campground, some of these buildings are over 30 years old. We've had some infrastructure installed to be able to plug and play some generators that we have on-site. So, some of that is we're going to have to rip it out. But also, when we went through the process where everybody came out, you know, there were some things that were noticed that, you know, they said, well, when we do this, we have to do it to this level now. You know, when you put it in, it was at this level. So, some of that is, you know, as they're tearing the panels apart and figuring out how things are wired and that, because there's been, you know, over the years, a lot of changes made.
So, if I may, Chair, so all seven contractors came out and to each location and looked at what they had?
Yep.
Okay, so maybe to echo what Mr. Shoemaker was saying, they, they do this on a daily basis, commercial, residential, everything else. If they come to my house and say, I'm going to install a generator for seven grand, but it might be 17, I'm going to call somebody else, right?
Yep.
So, they, they should have the ability, I would think, to, to look at what you have on the ground and give you a solid, hey, looks to me like it's seven grand apiece. If we have to use these parts, it's eight. But they didn't do that. They just gave you kind of a blanket. To, to me, that sounds like it's because they're bidding a government project and we've got a big checkbook.
Well, if I can jump in there, I think that's what they did, right? So, if we have to do this, it's going to cost this amount of money, the seven, whatever numbers you use. If we have to do something else, it's going to cost this amount of money. That's what they did essentially by bidding it out in a unit price.
In a unit price. What, what I would be more comfortable seeing is the maximum price that they're saying it would cost. If it's 45, bring me a resolution for 45. The other company that was 48, maybe it's 58, right? I don't, I would be more comfortable seeing, I'm going to do this project for you. It might cost 45, but I'm going to do it to you solid and finish it at 35. So, to me, I would be more comfortable seeing that. Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm looking at this resolution literally, the six words before the amount. And the six words before the amount says, in an amount not to exceed $35,220. And then, the five words after that says, to provide for the installation. So, installation is one thing, parts is another thing. Labor, labor and installation kind of go together, I think. Parts is a separate thing. And so, if there are issues and challenges with the parts that cause this amount to go higher, I think that's a separate resolution that we would consider. But for this particular resolution, for the installation, it should not exceed 35,220, because in effect, I believe that was the low bid. Is that correct?
It, it was the second to lowest bid. There was somebody that bid about 10,000, which, you know, we felt was too low.
Sure. Okay. Okay.
This, Commissioner Cruz, no?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing that Dr. Brown said. It says not to exceed. And so, I'm comfortable with that.
So, does anyone else have anything? Then I'm going to make this, so this includes generators, the generators, though?
Uh, we have the generators.
So, we already purchased the generators?
Yes.
But this is just parts and labor.
This is just, yeah.
Installation, yeah.
Yep.
Labor. All right. Okay. Like I said, I, I would be more comfortable sending it back out, because 10 grand just for labor seemed, that's, that's a lot of labor, even at 200 bucks an hour, if that's what you want to figure it out. So, from there, we'll vote on it. It's board's pleasure. And then, if they decide to turn it down, then they can go, we can go back to the drawing table. They can rebid it out. So, with that being said, if no one else has anything to add, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes.
Move resolution 2025-1966, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in the amount of $378,541 to provide programming at Genesee County State Park. The budget for this agreement is attached.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion?
I have, I have a quick question. Through you, Mr. Chair, through Mr. Freeman or, um, Patrick. With the state park, so has the final design been determined already for the park? I can't, that escapes me.
Patrick can speak to that.
It is, it is still in process, depending on the block and the amenities.
And who's working, who's working on the final design? Is it?
Um, so, we are working in tandem with the project partners. So, the DNR, the City of Flint, MOP Foundation, and the Community Foundation.
So, it will, it will be great if we had, I know we had the parks. Who's work? Okay. And then, is there a point in that project? Because I know that sits in one of my colleagues' district, but it sits inside the city property, proper. Is there a point before that's finalized that maybe that plan for those on the board who's interested in what that looks like to be able to weigh in on it? Or is it going to be finalized and it's going to come down? Just what, what are the next steps?
Um, so, there has been public comment on some of the design going through at the early stages of it, and that was taken into account as the design has moved forward. But we also have partnership agreements, or I mean, partnership meetings on a regular basis, where all the partners sit through and go through it. So.
So, at what stage in the process is that project? No?
Uh, it, it depends on the block and the amenity. So, Riverbank Park, we are pretty far through that. Chevy Commons with the amenities there, we are about halfway through the design phase there. Happy Hollow, we're pretty close to being done with that phase for design work. You have other ones like the Grand Drivers Greenway, section of the Ironbell Trail, that still has to, has to be designed. Some of the trail connections still have to be designed.
So, will any of that, and this will be my last question. I can take the rest off of offline. But will any of that ultimately come to us for any action? What, what will be coming to us for action? Nothing?
So, we are working on, we're taking the state's approach to a master developer for the project. So, you will be seeing that. We're currently out for bid for a master developer.
Can you provide to us the, I said I'd have one more question. I guess this is going to be a, can you provide to us what? Can you provide to us, um, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you offline. I'll, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for indulgence.
Yep.
Anyone else with any discussion?
I have more discussion. So, actually, I didn't ask a final question. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else on this? No more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move resolution 2025-1972, approval of a grant award from the Sarah McDonnell Voyel Fund at the Community Foundation of Greater Flint in the amount of $13,000 to provide kayaking programs for underserved communities.
We have a motion to support.
He likes it.
Any discussion?
Let's go kayaking.
I thought the way you said it, I thought you were going to say, I want to talk about it, but okay. That being said, we have a motion to support with no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no unfinished business, new and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, report. I apologize.
Yeah, I do have one thing. Yesterday, myself, Vice Chair Avery, and Chair Mr. Lloyd met with Mr. Freeman and some of the other employees in regards to the tower move. And I would like for Mr. Freeman to give a brief update on that, if you would.
Thank you.
Yep. So, the day is finally here. We're going to move. That is coming up very quickly. We're going to be closing a couple of different buildings to the public beginning August 1st, and then all through the week of August 4th. And that would be all of the services here at the Administration Building. Probably most importantly to the public is going to be the Clerk Registered Deeds Office is going to be closed to the public as well as the Treasurer's Office. And we're, over that week period, we're going to transition this building as long as, as well as our Health Department at Burton Health in McCree down to the tower. Everything is going to go super smooth, and there's going to be no hiccups. And it'll be a seamless transition for August 11th. We'll reopen to the public at a central location downtown at the Genesee County Administration Building? Tower? The new one, yeah. That's it. That's the gist of it. This is a culmination of probably four years of work by a lot of staff members to find a way to consolidate space and save, save, save some money. You know, the example that Commissioner Wayhill had me giving this morning is, you know, this building costs us about $600,000 a year to operate for 100 people that's in this 130,000 square foot building. We expect the tower to cost us around $400,000 a year to operate, and that include about 325 to 350 people. We're going to go from four roofs to one roof. We're going to go from four heating systems to one heating system, four parking lots to one parking, well, an adjacent parking lot. So, how do we continue to deliver services at the most cost, you know, in the most cost-effective way? It's exciting. It's an exciting move for Genesee County.
Mr. Freeman, thank you so much for that. Can we have Jared or either you talk a little bit about the communication plan for the public, for those that are watching and those who are in the audience to understand how that information is going to be communicated to the public so that they understand there's a thought-out communication plan where everybody will be informed?
Yep. Jared, our communications director will be able to fill us in.
All right. Good evening. I'll make this quick. So, we started rolling out our communications plan for the tower move this week. We started off with our staff, obviously, for our purposes. We wanted to get them ahead of any public notifications. So, we started out with all staff emails. We started off with emails to our tower staff, which is a subtly different message than what we have for the entire county staff. We did paid social media. We've done IndiGov outreach. For those who don't know, IndiGov is a constituent relations platform that we use to be able to reach out to our constituents directly with this information. The county website, obviously, our 1836 Place News and Information Blog, news release, and then obviously signage is going up all over the county starting this week. And then beyond that, things like senior center newsletters. We're trying to just cover all of our bases. So, started that this week, and we'll charge through it next week as well.
And that information will include schedule of closures, schedule of reopening, parking locations. I know parking has been something that a lot of people talk about, and we want to get that message out to people that we've got a 600 space parking deck attached to the building. You don't even have to go outside. There's a tunnel that comes right into the building, you know, and that's on top of the street parking around it, the parking at the Flatlot, parking at the Rutherford Ramp, which is just around the corner as well. So, we've heard, you know, those concerns from the community, and we're trying to address them.
All right. Thank, thank you both for everything that you share. So, again, I think that one of the biggest takeaways for the public and what has been shared is that the week of August 3rd through the 11th, that entire first week of August, beyond, yeah, the entire first week of August, that this building will be closed for operation. So, residents who would generally come here to take care of whatever business or frequent any departments, those services will not be available that week, but will be the following week at the new tower. Thought that's something for the public to know. And then just a, just a kind of momentous comment that this is our last meeting in this space. And over so many years, there are so many that have been elected to serve, so many residents and department heads, folks, employees that have served the county, that have come in this space, commissions who've met to really take care of the business of the public, and all of which have served us so well. And so, you know, although it's goodbye to this space, it's also hello and a bright future and a better space that will better serve our residents and that will be more inspirational to our employees as well, just that our employees deserve a much better space to come to. We have awesome employees here at Genesee County who also deserve to work in a space that's more inspiring, that more so meets their needs, that's cleaner, that's more up to date. And, and it's because of our residents and because of the employees that were able to do that. One last salute to the county commissions before us, those who had vision to help guide us to this point and then to this body for work and contributions to kind of carry us across the finish line. Hats off to Mr. Freeman and Derek and Ray and other members of the team, the transition team, the employees that have met, who have talked through design and ideas and so on and so forth. I just want to say on behalf of all of us, salute to you. A job well done. And it's because of your stewardship and because of your dedication to this project that, that, that we're going to have a really space, a space that's truly, truly awesome, something that I believe the residents of Genesee County will be proud of. So, again, thank you all.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Any final goodbyes they want to say to the auditorium aloud? Okay. With, with none, with none of that, now we'll move into new and miscellaneous business. We're, resolution 2025-1995, motion to enter into closed session. With that, I'll turn it over to, to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I start, Mr. Freeman said that we wanted to add another, a fourth closed session. It's related to a union contract. I think it was just an oversight or that the agenda was printed before.
Yep. Yep. We want to, we would like to add a discussion about the POAM contract as well. So, we were already talking about an ASME contract. We'd also like to add POAM.
Okay. So, we need a motion and a support to add that to the agenda?
I'll move it.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion? Has to add it? With no discussion, all, do we need roll call for that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
All right. Thank you. As you are aware, the Open Meetings Act allows this public body to go into closed session for certain reasons. One reason is for strategy and negotiation sessions connected to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. If either party requests a closed hearing, you just added one. There's also a request to go into closed session regarding the ASME 496.02 Juvenile Justice Center Union Contract. Also, the OMA allows you to go into closed session to consult with your attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy connected to specific pending litigation. There's two cases that we have attorneys to discuss with you on. The first is the matter of Allen et al. versus Genesee County Drain Commissioner, Division of Surface Water Management et al. That's Genesee County Seventh Circuit Court Case Number 14-103184-NZ. And the second is a matter of SM versus George Zofchak et al. That's Genesee County Seventh Circuit Court Case Number 25-53422-CZ. We only need one motion to go into closed session for all four items. And you'll need six votes to go into closed session. Six votes will get you into closed session for all four.
Okay. I need a motion.
For resolutions.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion before we vote? With no discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McCree?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz now?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Yes.
Commissioner Huhwelli?
Yes.
Seven to nothing we.
Okay, motion passes. We're now in closed session. We're now in closed session.[536.82]
All right, we're back in session at, um, eight fifty-two. So we're gonna start with Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen fifty-two. Uh, requests for approval of Ask Me four ninety-six point zero-two J C J J C Union Contract.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion seen now all in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. All right, next we have Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen ninety-six. At this time, and it's, uh, that is the, uh, well, we have the resolution number, I won't read it. Uh, the, um, I'll accept, entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Drain Commissioner.
Move it.
Support and Corporation Council. All right, it's been moved and supported. Uh, you called who moved and supported, I didn't. Okay, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes next. Before us, we have Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen ninety-seven. Um, at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Attorney. Been moved and supported. Any discussion seen now and all in favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Uh, there's nothing else on the agenda, no additional comments. This meeting is adjourned.